I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, infinite in its essence.
Good evening and thank you for coming. We started off with our work session tonight and we'll go right into my first item, which is the Friends of Knox Park in a temporary use permit. Is there anyone here representing them? You want to come up to the mic that Dave? Come on up. Oh, Jen. Me? Hi, Jen. I didn't see you under that hat. So, we just, I think it's a great event. I think there's some questions that the board probably wants to ask and
We're ready to answer.
Yeah. And then I think Councilman McCann had a pretty good idea and I'll maybe I'll let you start with that.
Sure. Thank you, supervisor. So I obviously the only way this impacts the town directly is the parking situation and it's April. So as you can assume, we have concerns that you had mentioned that we might get a major influx of people into the area and your estimates might end up being low for attendance. So what we had discussed and I think I had sent out an email as well is perhaps we should convene a meeting of the stakeholders, the police, Dave Highway, if they're willing to attend, the town and or possibly representation from the village too. Cause that where people tend to overflow, they they'll park at the end of Gerard there and whatever. We just want to make sure with all the variables, weather being one, we could have snow, you could get over influx or who knows? That we just want to make sure we're prepared for any eventuality. What are your thoughts on that in terms of parking?
So I think, I think if you, if it turn, if it like, if we look at just the event that we're producing at Knox, it would be two to three thousand people, which is way less than Borderland. So as far as that specific parking, I don't think it would impact the village at all and we could manage it. I mean, we'd have to talk to Dave, but there's a lot of drainage and the polo grounds, the parking over there, right? It's pretty solid.
I just wanted to put some input in on this because Joe, you want to be the waiter?
Well, no, no, I was pointing. Yeah, it sounds good. Cause I'm not sure we can use the lawn.
I haven't talked to Jennifer about this, but in my opinion, knowing the size of this event and scope now, I think that we should consider closing the road. And the reason I say that now is because Jim, as you know, we have so much rainproof parking. But if it came to what your fear is, we could actually turn in a whole row of the road into a lane and probably park three, four hundred cars right on the road.
I take it.
Cause I don't think we would have the room for that event as it is. So I think we plan on using as much of the parking that we normally do, but have that as a backup plan. I think that's probably, probably the best plan.
I think that's a good idea too, because if it is a couple of thousand people walking in that across Knox, I think it'd be better to have the road closed anyway.
So it's closed, but then you're parking people on it as well. So it's kind of a combo.
That's what you do, Joe. You would start with both of your outer parking lots. There's quite a bit of rainproof parking and go from there. And if it got to where you did overflow, you could then, I think back when we originally did that, I remember we were going to put a lane out by the road, Ray, when we took over the park. So there is a big wide shoulder on that road on the south side. So you could put angled cars all the way through there and still fit two lane traffic. It's, it's just my thought. I think it's the only way in April eighth, you're going to be able to pull this off. If you're right, about two thousand people, you're talking thousand cars.
Yeah. So, so just explain a little bit about the event and there's some representatives from the friends group here. If you want to ask more questions about the actual event, like the email that I sent, I, I don't know if you guys have done recon on the totality. If you know a lot about the actual eclipse. So it according to Erie County, it could potentially attract hundreds of thousands of people to the county. So it could be this massive event in they're, they're closing all the schools, all the public schools, schools out here, everything. So it's a global thing where people fly from all over the world to witness this event. And Buffalo East Aurora just happens to be in the direct line of the totality. So it's like, we could potentially get a lot of people flying here. If it was me, I'd go to Mexico where we know it's going to be sunny, but shoot in Buffalo, it's April eighth, it could be whatever, but we're hoping it's going to be beautiful. And if day, April eighth of last year was perfect, blue, bluebird, blue sky day. So if we get that again, we're going to have a full on total eclipse here, which is real, it's a phenomenon. So it's really, really cool. So the friends group is producing this event and they're going to cap their specific event. We're going to sell tickets to it. And it's going to be capped and at a certain number. So we'll know in advance how many people are actually coming to this event that's being produced at Knox. But in like Borderland, the rest of the park's still going to be open. So that's where I just, that's, and then so people could be coming from all over and just hang out in the park to watch the totality. They could watch it in their backyard. It starts around two o'clock.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. It starts around two o'clock and the sky will start to change and you know, it's really cool. Cause if you're in nature, all the birds stop, crickets stop, like nature just goes quiet, which is why the park is a really cool place for this. And then the event at Knox itself, it's going to be in the you know, at Borderland, when we activate the stables and there's all these vendors, we're going to do the same thing for this. So there'll be all these different mogs involved, like there's going to be a planetarium. It's going to be really kid focused, family friendly, all these different activations around the like planet based stuff. Earth's got science gun, all that. So there's going to be music. We're going to have a stage. So there is like, it's going to be an actual like event and we want from twelve to six, and we want people to hang out all day potentially. But that doesn't mean there, if there's hundreds of thousands of people coming into Erie County, where are they all going? Are they going to Niagara Falls? Are they going like, where are they going? So I, we just wanted, Joe and I talked and we're like, we just wanted the village and the town to be aware that this not that the Knox event is necessarily happening, but the overall eclipse is happening and people could be coming into town.
So Jen, is it your intention then to only allow that parking in the state in the, in the part release?
Yeah.
So you'd want to have that reserved strictly for those attending your event?
Yes. So then.
So that creates some, some right. We now we need somebody checking tickets.
Yes. And we'll, we'll do, we'll do that through the friends group. We'll make sure that that's staffed out here to make sure that's properly managed. And we'll work with David and Andy as well to make sure that that's all dealt with. So the other, so if people, and then the, the parking up by the red barns, that's still going to be free public access parking. So the goal of this event is to get people to come out, raise money for Friends of Knox, create a really cool thing around this special day that that, you know, Buffalo is in the direct line of the overall park is still going to be accessible. So it, people might come there and that was, that's where I just felt like everyone should get more engaged in general. We don't want people just pulling over parking on the side of Buffalo Road. Are people going to park in the village? Like who I, we just literally, it's a huge mystery. Like nobody, nobody knows.
That's probably why it's a good idea for everyone to meet with, with the police chief. Maybe have some ideas of secondary parking, just in case we fill up. Do you have an idea, Dave, on the number of cars we can put?
No, but I think what we should do is, is put it down on a map and we can measure it out.
Yeah.
It's quite, they'll be able to feel quite a bit up there as long as we're using the road as parking. But you're right. And that was another question. Are you going to let just regular visitors of the park? You know, if we're going to have the road closed, there's going to be at each end, somebody to let people were allowed in there, or is this exclusive for the friends event?
The parking that we want to get approved is for the friends event.
Okay. So we won't let anybody through unless they have a ticket.
Yes.
Okay. Or whether it's volunteers or the highway department manning.
Yeah.
The in and out.
Yeah.
So does it?
And it's from twelve to six. So it's not, we could close.
Right. So I don't think if they're able to monitor how many tickets they sell, I don't think it's really an issue for our end. If that's what we're saying, that we're not letting anybody else in there.
Well, I think, yeah, I think the issue, so are you fencing off the area where the viewing area?
We're fencing off the area or we're going to have some sort of barricades, bike, something to designate that this is the actual event area around the stables. So it's not like we can block the whole park and be like, don't come to the park. We're just trying to create an actual event that's curated with experiential stuff for people.
I mean, I think we, I think we have to close down the street because there's, there's going to be, I mean, if the schools are closed, everybody's going to be looking for a place to view it.
Right.
Um, we'll, we'll have to close that street down. But I also think that you're, I mean, we as a town should expect that there's going to be people walking over there as well, probably even, you know, parking at the school you could see and going over just East Aurora residents.
They'll be parking all the way down naturally.
Yeah. Separate from the parking request, which is, which is really only what we're here to get. But I would just think it could be a big event in general that East Aurora could get people coming in for.
Yeah.
So they might just want to have some contingency plans for that.
Right. We probably wouldn't have an ambulance that's somewhere.
Well, I just feel like it's better to be prepared than not to be prepared.
Yeah.
Cause, cause who knows? Cause like if you, if it goes based on other totality events around the world, I mean, Dave Norton would know more because he's an expert in awesome stuff.
I'm sorry, what? Who, who was that? Oh, I, I thought you were saying Dave Gunner. I was.
Yeah.
About the actual, but it's because he's gone to global eclipses, but it's a really, really big deal. And it's Buffalo is not just on the fringe of this, we're in the direct smack direct.
But I know that what, what I'm, I know this isn't what you came here before, but I think, I mean, we may have issues in non-planned places.
Oh yeah, they're going to be parked all the way down natural.
But not, not just Knox. I mean, majors. Yeah. Hamlin will have people in there.
All the more reason to.
So we need to kind of get a contingent plan and get a committee together to.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I personally don't have any issue with your plans and what you're looking for. I think closing down the streets is a good way to do it. But I do think as a community, we kind of have to plan a bit better for it.
No, like we said, like, we don't know for sure that all those people will be coming. But if you look at right thing, like it's a big deal.
Okay. Well, that's, I mean, just, I even think people locally, if we're going to be, you know, having, because it's only, how long does it last? A couple of minutes, right?
Yeah.
But it starts.
Yeah. Yeah.
I didn't want to go move, just move forward and schedule a meeting and then table this.
Yep.
But do we need someone that wants to chair it? You do? Oh yeah, absolutely. But I would rather be prepared.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, I think we should get someone on that committee and talk to, is it through Polling Cars's office?
Yeah.
Through, through the county executive office. Yeah. No. Well, we'll have to create a special task force to.
Yeah, I, I think because we don't know how big this could be and it's, it sounds like a wonderful, great event. And you know, I, I think everyone agrees that, you know, we're for it. But I really think we need to, like you said, a task force, or I think Joe said he would.
Yeah, be happy to.
Jim said also, we need to schedule a meeting of all the people involved in the village and the town. And be prepared, prepare for the worst, hope for the best and whatever.
We should, we should include the, the park ranger, right? Or I don't know what your title is. A manager or operations manager.
Is involved there. So others, other, so basically the event at Knox at the park that they want the friends group is doing is is just one of like thousands of events around the county, like, like Niagara Falls is doing them and Andy knows is a part and knows about all the other state parks that are activating in the area as well. And like, they opened up camping, early camping, right? Like the state parks have opened up early camping. So people can come in and camp, like it's a big deal. So Easter or the, the event that they're doing is going to be very controlled because it's ticketed. It's just, even if the event wasn't happening, Knox would be open to public. So it's just the village should just be prepared, maybe.
Yeah. We, we, I mean, we could do things like encourage people to go to majors and get spots and majors that you could do parking. But how many people could you get over there? Not many.
Well, I think we need to focus on what we can control, right? Which is this, like, like Dave said, figure out how much area you have, how many cars we can park there, how we're going to close down the street, which is something we've done before, how we're going to monitor access to that area. You know, what's appropriate since, since this event, which is a event that's charging, obviously to raise money. You're going to be using town resources and a road you're going to shut down and park on. So there's a lot of questions and we want to make sure we have the police input on that as well. So we have another, I think we just have another meeting. We have a separate meeting rather, and then, then we move forward from there. Everybody's in favor of the event, but we want to be prepared.
Is it possible we're doing?
Town resources other than the parking.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly. Yeah. Yeah.
But the, again, the police department should be aware of fire company, everyone, emergency services, everyone should be aware when there's a possibility of a big event. Um, do you want to take charge of scheduling something?
Absolutely. I've already sent out an email. You, I think it already include, glued most of the stakeholders on that email. Now that we've had this meeting and we've decided to move in that direction, I'll send another email in the very, very near future.
Yeah.
Probably after Christmas, but in the very near future, I'll have another meeting. It'll get on the agenda following that and we'll, we'll take it from there. I mean, we have till April, but I know you want to have everything concrete.
Terrified though. What the friends group is asking for is, is, is just the parking and like this big event that could happen, could happen with or without.
Yep.
Oh yeah.
Yeah. No, I think we, we have, we have two. We're assigning two different tasks to Joe. One is getting this taken care of, which is the easy part. And the second part is getting the greater community to understand what we can do about it.
Yeah.
What could potentially be.
My concern is that we're utilizing resources that would otherwise be communally shared, right? So we're occupying parking adjacent to Knox and we're going to occupy the road.
Right.
So I want to see how many cars fit in that space, right? Cause we're taking them out of commission.
Got it.
So I think that's something we have to, have to consider.
Yeah, but you might as well get paid. The people are coming in anyways. So.
That's another question.
Yeah, Joe, I, I think just in my experience, the two rainproof parking lots, you're probably looking at about 500 cars for those two. So I guess that's my only concern is, is how many tickets? That's really.
If it is. That's going to dictate how many tickets.
That's what I mean. So I, I think, you know, you probably could do close to a thousand cars, but no more than that. It's seven fifty to a thousand.
What, what part, what, what are you talking about?
I'm talking about both the east and the west ones where we have what we call runways already in that are pretty weatherproof. We can fit on the one on the east side, three hundred cars. The one on the west side, and I'm talking the west sides of the fields and the east sides, about two hundred cars. And I know this from what we've done in the past with Borderlands. And then up on the road itself, you know, it's a huge stretch. I just thought probably at least three hundred up there. We'd have to measure it out. So I think at the end of the day, as long as they're not going to sell any more tickets that you pretty much can guarantee you're not going to run out of parking, right?
Yeah. And I think what you're saying is that.
But it's if they park on other roads though, that's for people not at that event.
Yeah. I, I think you're a hundred percent correct. I understand what you're saying is that that parking could be used for the whole town.
So we, you just need to take that into consideration that you're, you're taking spots out of availability for this, this event.
Right.
And I think that's something that, that we need to discuss.
Are, are you selling tickets that are non-parking tickets?
So the, there were not, parking tickets aren't even being sold. It's the event. What is it? Twenty dollars?
Yeah.
It's a cover cost. Yeah. It's mostly just like inactivated, like others, the other state parks are doing stuff. And so this is kind of like an event at Knox to celebrate this thing, this event.
Yeah, no, no, it's, it's a great idea. Yeah.
I get what you're saying though. And like Parkdale will be open that day because and then Moog has tons of, will that probably work?
School will be closed, but the lot will be open, you're saying?
Yes. Yeah. So there's spots there.
We have no relationship. That's not, that's not a conversation we've had with the school district, right? It's just you're saying there's spots there.
Unless you can.
Option for the village parking.
Yeah.
Because, because that's a village based thing, but also like we, we use Parkdale and it's just a permit and a fee. So like, and they probably waive it. So I'm just saying like there, we could, we, at this next meeting, we could talk about the other options.
There you go. Yeah. How we could redirect traffic and.
Yeah, there's like Parkdale, there's the middle school parking lot now, because the school will be closed. There's the Fisher Price lot, the Rink lot, you know, like, so there's other lots that the village could use if people come in town that we could kind of designate. Also in addition.
So how about we follow up with an email tomorrow evening? I'll send something out, set a date with the stakeholders and we'll have our separate meeting and hopefully can get it wrapped up before our first meeting in January.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing this to us early.
Yeah. Yeah. I think it's going to be really cool. So we just visualize a sunny day.
Yeah. To make it the best that it can possibly be.
Yeah. Yeah.
We don't, you know, we're, we need, we don't want to visualize a sunny day to have a non-sunny day.
We want.
We want a clear day for, for a non-sunny day. Yeah.
Yeah. And, and it's going to be like really cool. So.
Take a look, three meetings ago, actually Joe and Jim, we're doing a rain dance down here.
I used to have a limit sundance, so I know what's up. Wow. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You were going to ask Lou, you had a question too, Luke, about how long you can stare at the eclipse without glasses that you mentioned that question to me.
I'm, I'm pretty sure if I practice before the eclipse, just looking at the sun, then I'll be okay by the time the eclipse comes.
I want to make sure that was covered tonight.
All right. Next we have the OAN rezoning local law. And we need uh, to schedule a public hearing. But are there any questions on it or any issues before we do that? If not, talking to Martha, we probably should schedule this for the first meeting in January. Uh, because our last meeting is at eleven o'clock on a Thursday and some people who maybe want to be here couldn't be. So, um, do you have a date on that, Martha?
I think it's the eighth.
Would that be at our reorg meeting then?
Yeah.
Or should I say your reorg meeting?
The eighth.
January eighth?
Yeah.
So do you want to set it for January eighth, seven o'clock? Or do you, yeah, you do it before the reorg set. Okay. All right. January eighth. Okay. Uh, next we have the solar project on Berkeley Road. Is Mr. Hughes here? No. We have the seeker and a special use permit to go through. We can do that in the meeting. Uh, there's no issues. There's one, just one little contingent that we would have is the site plan that was submitted shows the electric going from the barn to the solar panels. And I think it's supposed to go from the house to the solar panels. Is that correct? So, um, when we get there, we just make a contingent on getting the correct site plan. For our records.
That's, what's that based on? Building code?
Uh, I would think it'd have to go from the solar panels to where the electric service comes into the house.
Uh, makes sense. Okay. So just a logical thing.
That's the burner. I kind of doubt it's the burner.
I think it was just a mistake in the drawing.
Gotcha. Okay. So when it's, I wouldn't, it would just be contingent on just them getting us to proper.
So is anybody Doug from the planning board? Do you remember that issue coming up or? There's probably, yeah.
Say that again, Rich?
John requested that changed. That is not reflected in the application.
So John requested the change to make it correct.
Everything else, the seeker looks good. It's been approved by the planning, so we're, we're good. Uh, next we have, uh, two thousand twenty-four water rate increases and these are only for our private roads. Since that's all we build now and our costs of the water is just what the Erie County Water Authority charges us and it's just a pass through. So this is just a list of um, what it's going to cost the private roads going forward. Are any questions on that? We are going to send out a letter. I believe in February. Just to alert the private road residents that, uh, the water rates are going up. It's, and it's not the town raising the rates, it's Erie County Water Authority. We're just passing that cost through.
It goes up every year, right? Or no?
The water per thousand will go up a few cents, but this was a big jump.
And then do we charge a separate infrastructure fee then for the?
We charge a maintenance fee.
Right. Yeah. And those aren't going up, just the Erie County ones.
Our maintenance fee is not going up.
Right.
It is a little bit. Yeah.
That's not mean the twenty five hour.
No, twenty five dollars.
Yeah. Yeah. And they're going up except for on Hickory Lane. Um, they're going down.
Well, yeah, we, we decided we'd discuss that issue after the first.
Okay. Okay. It was just a joke, everyone. I live on Hickory Lane. Okay. And you guys, there's a whole list of increases you guys, I was just going to say as listed, if that's okay.
Right. Yeah.
Next we have a request from Dave Gunner and this is, um, to set following pay rates is of January first. Dave, do you want to speak on that?
Yeah, this is something we talked about during the budget season with, uh, my liaisons. Um, it's just trying to bring everybody up to, uh, the same rate of pay and also to ensure that we're able to get some retirees to come work for us. We got one that probably won't come work for us if we don't raise the pay that lives on Hickory Lane. Just kidding. Uh, yeah. So this is just more with, uh, the amount of pay movements that we've had over the couple of years, just to bring it up to a fair rate going forward. So, um, everybody will get raised up to the one where, uh, the one employee was at twenty. And he does understand he won't go up January first. So starting January first, all four of our, I'll say retired, but our part-time staff, um, will be at the same rate of pay. And it's actually based right about what a laborer rate of pay is in the union.
Any questions on board? Nope. Okay. Then the book, it's on the agenda. Next we have a updated sexual harassment policy and this is, uh, from Valerie. And, uh, this is actually because the state is mandating it. Our, uh, the updates that are on our policy are from the state. So we, it's kind of a boilerplate and, um, I don't think we need to, to read through them unless you want me to, otherwise we'll just adopt it. Okay. And then the next is the New York State DOT permit for the, uh, new West Falls sign. And I think this is just, uh, a permit for putting it in there right away, correct?
Actually, it's a little. Actually, it's a little more complicated than that, Jim. Um, this is uh where our current sign we put up last year went. Um, Mr. Beeler has generously offered to donate a larger sign. Um, the one that we put there was nice, but it's not quite the size that uh really stands out in that area. So we actually went and duplicated the exact same size sign as the Village of East Aurora entrance ones are. So uh Mr. Beeler will be uh donating the check for this when uh we do it. Uh, so what this permit is, is to take the small sign down and we're going to now put that on the northbound lane at the beginning of the hamlet coming from Colden. So in this permit, that's what that permit is for a new location for the old sign, the smaller one. And it also updates the original location for the large one. Uh, there is one other thing that we're working on that could happen in the future. Um, Mr. Connor Schneider on Old Glenwood Road is uh offered to have us look into putting it up there for better visibility. He's working with Town Clerk Librock on that. We believe it's in the town of Aurora right away, not the state right away, so it shouldn't be an issue, but we need to do further research before we go ahead and do that.
It has nothing to do with this.
Has nothing to do with that, but I just want to let you know that, you know, if the board would want, it may be a better, more visible location.
So up on the hill, just as long as you're.
Yeah, it would be like uh not on the hill. Um, he, uh, so it'd be right on his south side of his property line. Kind of, there's like a wood there and it would be in the shoulder. There is a, a flatter area.
Gotcha.
Before the hill. I've looked at it, but the trouble is, it's kind of trying to figure out now where our property lines are, because as you know, Old Glenwood used to be a state road at one time and now it's a town road. Um, it's definitely not in the state right away, so we won't need a permit. But if it's in the town right away, it's pretty simple. Of course, we could do that, but if it's not, it would require us to get a easement for Mr. Schneider to do that. So there's just so many questions on that one, but we're working on that one, right, Martha? And uh.
First I heard about Connor working with me on it.
Okay. I thought you got the, you got the emails, right, that he sent you? Okay. All right. Well, anyway, well, I'll work on that. But we'll get these two up. I'm hoping uh this, once we get this signed, um, we'll get that up here around the first of the year, get these new signs up and.
About, about a year ago, there was the discussion about the sign perhaps that where the um uh, the, the old Glenwood meets up with two forty, because that is property that is.
No, that's, that the state rejected that, that that was in the state right away.
Right.
Talked about the current West Falls sign was that we originally looked at. Um.
Uh, were Old Glenwood and uh two forty made?
On the north side of Old Glenwood is the property we originally looked at.
That's it be on the south side on the.
This other proposal would be on the south side of Old Glenwood. I.
Uh, uh, yeah, maybe.
That's where you're talking.
I'm talking about the south side, right? Not, not on Connor's land, but on land that uh is uh that right at the T there?
Connor, I'm gonna say Connor owns right down.
No, no. What, okay. Do you know where the campers always park?
Between Old Gunwood and two forty where the, where the road, where the roads come together. Yeah.
Inside the Y.
Right, right. Exactly.
That's where you're talking is a gentleman has a camper out by the road there.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's how we looked at it because of where the right of ways were with the state there. They owned too much and they weren't comfortable with us putting it there.
Well, I think, yeah, we, they, they want to keep up the green West Falls sign as well. They didn't want to take it down.
Yes, exactly.
So that was another issue that we couldn't put up where that current regular green West Falls sign is. And then getting down closer to the Y, there wasn't enough room to put up a sign when you get into where like on our.
Yes.
It was like too far away that you would, wouldn't like be able to see it by the time it comes back into the state right away. So.
Right. So the Schneider property just provides an area of elevation that puts it up more visible. I'm not saying that's what we're gonna do, but um, yeah, so the property that we originally looked at, you're correct. Uh, the state wouldn't let us do it. And then Luke's right, what you're thinking about is more of that big guff area that's uh on the south side where it's paved from the old original road.
Right.
And there was just nowhere in there to put it.
Especially since they're gonna be redoing two forty. I don't know if that would uh either, that, that might, that might eat up more land. I don't know. So.
Uh, I don't think that impacts it. The full depth project is from Bame Road to the bridge. Um, I think it's just a standard melon fill.
Okay.
From all that. But again, this is, I was just an FYI that a year from now, if we like a better spot, there's nothing wrong with the current spot, but obviously the more visible the sign is, I guess.
Yeah, there's, there's certainly an advantage of putting it up at the Connor's proposed site, I think.
Yeah, I think you definitely wouldn't miss it.
Yeah.
Whereas now you're kind of coming into a valley and it's just the way your eyesight is pointed down.
Sure.
I mean, I, I think as a visibility where, where we originally wanted, where you're talking would have been the best spot where the current green DOT West Falls is. So anyway, I will, um, once I get that permit, I'll let you know when we're going to be switching over the signs and uh we'll uh work further on that.
Because we may not need the permit then if it's on our, if we end up doing it Connors.
We won't need a permit there. Well.
Well, for the south, south side, you're gonna still need it, but not on the.
Yes. Well, this permits are relevant. This was just to alter the current permit that we had
Yeah.
on the north side and it's cons- and it also provides the new location of the south side.
Is this outside just over the bridge, just this side of the bridge or?
This side of the bridge. It's actually right where Union Concrete did that uh creek repair.
Yeah.
So there's actually like a uh former job site, like kind of parking area there and it fits really nice. It's perfect. It's uh just right kind of where the hamlet would start. It's a good location. It's good.
Anything else for the work session uh before we move on? If not, we will start our regular meeting. Tonight, we have no public hearings, so I'll move to a motion to approve the November twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three work session and meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Joe.
I'll second.
And second by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. And that is carried. Next, we have audience and it's an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address uh the town board and any items that are on the agenda. If you do wish to do so, please come up to the mic and give us your name and address.
Rod Simeon by Barry Court. Uh, it seems to be, I recall when, when we were discussing the Olean road uh rezoning that the county highway was also RR and we were going to get a twofer out of it. I, I don't know if that's correct. I asked Rich and he was checking it. Do you know if that's true?
I believe it is in that description and that, in that survey description in the local law. I'm it, it mentions it.
You're talking the county property there?
Uh, I, I thought when we were discussing it, that that county property was RR and we were going to get a twofer out of it.
Yeah.
We zone that C two.
Then it would.
As, as well as considering the uh
This is just.
Like what, what I, yeah, it doesn't, I mean, because it's a county, they have immunity, so the zoning doesn't matter to them.
Yeah, I know, but that would then clear it almost way up to the up to the village line and that removes any questions about spot zoning. If, if it were RR, you could eliminate that.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea.
Yeah, I, I, I share the same memory you do, Rod. That's I understood as well.
And I thought they were gonna, you guys were gonna handle both of them at once.
Yeah.
Is that something uh that we would have to approach the county on?
We, the county can really do what it wants to because it's, yeah, just like we could here in the village.
I think Raj is just trying to say it, it, it needs some more uh conforming to the area.
Chuck, Chuck and I are going to be meeting with Jason Hurley, who is the one in the county who's managing the county project on the week of the eighteenth. So we can bring up
Okay.
this issue with them. What I'd say then is that.
We would just do it at a different.
Because we're, we're not doing this the next meeting, the, the meeting on the, the, the final meeting, we should just add that a separate local law to the public hearing, because we're not doing it next time anyways.
Property already. So like you said, they they're gonna do whatever they want with it.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll bring it up with them.
Okay.
But when we, so we need a local, we need to propose a public hearing at our next meeting to have it at the same hearing as the one we just we have approved yet, but we plan on doing.
Or you could, you could amend this by putting in the property description of the county property and do it all as one local law.
Oh, we can do it as one.
You can, but you'd have to modify this, re-represent it at the next meeting. And then set a public hearing for that.
Why don't we just table it then this time?
Should we just table this one? Or do you want to try to do it for the, is this, is that pushing it to do it for the eighth?
We can table it, reintroduce it as modified with the county property added to the local law introduction at the next meeting.
I, I don't want anybody to think that we're setting the local law on a meeting at.
No, we're just setting the, we're setting the meeting.
Setting that, yeah, setting the meeting for the local law. I don't want anybody to think that.
Well, we've made a big to-do out of it right now. If we're trying to do something secretive, we've, we failed in our mission, Chuck.
So do you want to table this? Is that what you're suggesting?
I think it's easier to table it rather than go and amend it and table it, just propose the new law the next meeting, have set the public hearing at the next meeting based on that amended law.
Okay.
Local law.
So it might not be January eighth, it might be the following meeting.
Well, it would be January eighth, right?
We said the next meeting. Still be January.
Still be January eighth.
Okay.
The date will be set the next.
All right. Okay, so we'll table.
We're gonna throw everything for his first one.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that up. That's good, good time.
Yeah, I realize, you know, we talked about the county could do what they want, but in order to make it clean.
Yeah.
That removes all doubt about spot zoning. So good move.
Very good, Rod.
Yeah. Thanks, Rod.
Thanks for bringing that up. Anybody else would like to talk to the board and any items on the agenda? If not, we will move on to unfinished business. And we have the Friends of Knox Eclipse event and we, I think we decided to table that for a committee meeting that would be um uh held by Joe. So do I have a motion to table the eclipse meeting?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. And as carried, and we just talked about the Olean rezoning law. Do I have a motion to table that?
So moved.
Motion by Luke.
I'll second.
By Chuck. All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. And that is carried. And next we have the Blakely Road Solar Project. Right here. Our first uh item on that is the seeker. And do uh, does the board want me to read through the whole seeker or can we vote on that there, uh, vote that there will be a negative declaration to the short environmental assessment form for this project?
I'm finding a little negative declarations.
You motion? By Chuck? Wait a second.
I'll second.
Second by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and that is carried. And then next we have the special use permit for the same project. And this is for the Hughes residence, twelve oh four Blakely Road. Um, and description of the special use permit is to have a seven point five KW ground mounted solar electric PC system. Uh, this was approved by our uh, planning board unanimously. So do I have a motion to approve the special use permit contingent upon uh, the correct site plan drawing?
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Joe, second by Chuck. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And that is carried. Thank you. Next, we have new business. We talked about the two thousand twenty-four quarterly water rate changes for our private roads and in the increases. And I need a motion to approve, approve these increases as listed.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck.
I'll second.
Second by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. And that is carried. And next we have the request from Dave Gunner to set the following pay rates effective January first, two thousand twenty-four. And this would be Dave Thomason, part-time labor at twenty dollars per hour. Uh, Mark Tamerik, part-time labor at twenty dollars per hour and Paul Keelik uh, changing his title to regular part-time labor at twenty dollars per hour. Do I have a motion to approve these pay increases?
So moved.
Motion by Joe.
I'll second.
Second by Chuck. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And that is carried. Next, we have the sexual harassment policy update. And this is um something that Valerie in my office has been working on. And this update, as it's listed, is, is uh recommendations and our recommendations from the state. And this is basically a boilerplate of the recommendations. Do I have any questions? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Jim?
Second.
Second by Joe. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. That is carried. Next, we have the New York State DOT permit for the West Falls sign. And I guess I need a motion to authorize the supervisor to sign. And the motion would be to relocate the current sign and to update uh, the location for the larger sign to be donated by Scott Beeler. Is that correct, Dave? Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck.
I'll second.
Second by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. And that is carried. Next, we have the senior center door project payment request. And this is for the amount of one thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars for material and services rendered through December two thousand twenty-three and payment number six, the final re- uh, retain- drainage to Alligator Construction Corp. For the senior center door replacement project. And the funds will be dispersed from A six, seven, seven, two, dot, two, oh, one. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Luke. Any discussion?
I hope this is the last we hear about the senior center door.
I think uh Chuck, you uh
I hope.
You uh, you kind of went over and checked it out and.
I did.
And.
I did and uh. Here we go.
It opens and you hear the movie as good as it gets.
Yeah, yeah. As good as it's gonna get.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. That's what you get when you have to take the lowest bid sometimes, I guess. Okay, next we have um request from Martha and this is for the library shed project for Inger uh, Inglefinger Custom Contracting. And this is to pay them in the amount of twenty-seven thousand three hundred dollars for materials and labor to construct the storage shed at the Aurora Town Library. And the funds will be dispersed from A one, six, two, zero, dot, four, two, two. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? You want to comment on it?
Do we know when it's going in? Yeah.
Yep. Um, tomorrow, Mike and maybe Dave and uh um, people from the library, depending. But some people representing the library, library are gonna get together to see what we want to do with shelving. Uh, the shed looks nice. Pretty basic. It's a shed with a shingle roof and vinyl siding, but uh, it looks good. So.
I think it it, it corrects the.
It it cor- corrects the problem that they've had for years of.
Yeah.
Getting bounced around where they store their books, so. And it certainly doesn't stick like a sore thumb. I haven't even noticed it, quite frankly. Right in there, nice.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, save the town money on the end of it.
Yep. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. And that is carried. Next we have the budget amendment for the. Um, sign for the um building here. The Aurora Municipal Center. And we need to approve the uh quest to amend the budget to pay for the purchase and installation. We need to decrease A one nine nine zero contingent account by two thousand nine hundred dollars. And increase A one six two zero dot four two two building and grounds by two thousand nine hundred dollars. Do I have a motion?
So moved. I'll second.
Motion by, was that Jim?
Yep.
Yep.
You guys are pretty close there.
Yeah.
Um. Any questions or comments? Um, I'll just say that uh we wanted to get this in on this year's budget, so it doesn't affect next year's budget, cause we had some money left over. And then as far as the placement of the sign. That'll be decided on what you guys decide on.
When the sign's done, right? We'll get notification.
When uh Martha had a good deal, when he gets the sign done, maybe he can bring it down and. Put it in different places and you guys can come down and make a decision on it, so. All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. And that is carried. Next we have a. Um, letter to Martha Librock, please accept this letter of official, is is an official two-week notice. Of I, my resignation as Town of Aurora Assistant Disaster Coordinator, effective. Close of business on December twentieth. I've enjoyed serving in this position and learned much from Mark Hartley and Randy Taylor. I'm grateful to the town for appointing me to this position and thank them for the opportunity to serve uh our community. That's from Tim Stroth. I have a motion to accept that resignation.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. And that is carried. Next we have communication and reports. I have the November two thousand twenty-three reports for the town clerk. Town Clerk and Tax, Town Clerk Water. Building Department, Dog Control Work Requisitions. East Aurora Police. Supervisor's Report and the Senior Center Report. Next we have business from our board members. Start with Joe.
Nothing to report.
Jim?
I I really didn't have anything to report and then I saw our legislator Jim Melashevsky here and just wanted to. Thank you so much for the service that you've given. It's been a short time, but it's uh been. Uh, worthwhile, I think to have you on the legislature as far as the Town of Aurora is concerned. Uh, I appreciate that, so saw you walk in, I just wanted to say hello and thank you.
And you're gonna really thank him in a minute.
Nothing tonight, Jim.
Luke?
Nothing.
Um. I guess what I was gonna talk about, I'm gonna let our legislator Jim Melziewski, if you want to come up to the mic and uh. Let everyone know what you got.
Sounds good.
You can pull that right out if it makes it easier for you. There you go.
Sit down.
Perfect.
Thank you very much, everybody. Um, happy holidays. Um, I'm here tonight to kind of wrap up uh the end of my term, as as was said over here, uh so. Uh Supervisor Bach, thank you. Supervisor Alex Snyder, thank you. Um, honorable members of the town board, thank you very much. Uh, was a great year. Um, we got a lot accomplished down at the ledge. Um, I think we had good lines of communication open over here and I was honored to represent everybody. Uh, from the Town of Aurora, the Town of East Aurora and District Ten. Um. Last week, we had the culmination of. Uh, two to three weeks of budget negotiations and anytime you lock a whole bunch of politicians and attorneys in a room for two or three weeks, it gets kind of comical. Um, with the negotiations, uh, I think we put forth a budget. That works well for the nine towns in District Ten, uh, works well for the residents of Erie County. Um, just like any negotiations, when you go into it, you're never gonna come out getting everything that you want. Um, but if both sides coming out feeling like they won, I think it's a win-win for everybody over here. Uh, one of the things that I was able to do uh for the Town of Aurora. Is come up with some community development grant money and cultural capital grant money. Uh, the community development grant money is very similar to the money that was allocated earlier in the season. Westfall's Performing Arts Center got some. Uh, the Aurora Historical got some and the Aurora Seniors got some. Um, I was honored to be able to do that. Um, in this round over here, which is coming out of the two thousand twenty-four budget. I was able to get five thousand dollars for the Aurora Senior Center for them to purchase new furniture down there. And ten thousand dollars for the Westfall's Performing Arts Center to continue the great work that they're doing over there. I'm guessing it's gonna go for programming. Um, they've done a great job and uh, you know, I really look forward to an exciting future from them. Um, once we got through that, we came into the. Cultural capital grant money. That was the, that was the big sums. Um, there was a lot of negotiations there. Um, I can tell you, I was dead set against borrowing any money. Um, as that was proposed, that we were gonna borrow money to fund this. Um, to me, that made absolutely no sense whatsoever. So we dug through and we found some money that was allocated in two thousand twenty-one through a cultural capital grant that was sitting at a bank. And uh, very similar to the road bonding money earlier in the year that was borrowed on allocated and sitting there. Um, personally, I think that money's better off in the hands of communities than it is sitting in a bank. Um, so with some negotiations there, uh, we came up with a decent amount for each legislator. And um, coming to the Town of Aurora, we have fifty thousand dollars to help update the playground over at the pool. Um, some new equipment over there, I think will definitely go a long way and the big one, um. As far as Aurora goes, uh, five hundred thousand dollars uh to the Friends of Knox Park to. Redo that wall going around the park. Um, that wall, I know means a lot to everybody in the Town of Aurora. But I would have to thank everybody in Southernary County. Um, coming from Elma, I know I drive by there. All the time and you shake my head and wondering, is that ever gonna get fixed? Is it ever gonna get fixed? Um. I'm very happy I had the opportunity to put my foot forward and say, yes, it's gonna get fixed. Um, I did have communication. Uh, with Friends of Knox, uh, they're really, really, really excited at the opportunity and um, you know. Hopefully work will get started later on this year. This money, um, it it is in the twenty-four budget. By the time it actually gets in the hands of everybody, it'll probably be right around summer. Um, so I will not be here when it comes, but I can uh, I can assure you that. When the groundbreaking or the dedication happens on that wall, I'll be standing right there, very happy, so um. Just wanted to say thank you very much once again uh to everybody on the board, to Mr. Gunner over here. Um, it's been a pleasure working with you guys. Uh, I'm not going away, just like you. Well, you you're going away. You're going away. I wish you uh much happiness, much happiness in your retirement. And I wish you much luck next year and uh, you know, everybody up here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And they say there is no Santa Claus, really? That is awesome. That is awesome, so. Um, and just so you know, Jim called me up at eleven thirty and said, I need to know by one thirty. What you need the money for. And I had a meeting at noon, so I said, Jim. So uh. I figured uh the playground was something that we wanted to finish, wouldn't take any of the ARPA money that saved it for the. Maybe the canoe launcher, whatever you guys decide, so uh, I had to make some quick decisions, but uh. Jim, Jim just kept saying, put, put it in for as much money as you need. So uh, thank you for the good work. I mean, uh, you've done a lot in one year and I wish you the best.
Still didn't have. An exact amount. You know.
Yeah. It's been great working with you and and best of luck to you.
Thanks.
Alright, next we have audiences. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience or online to. Talk to us on any item whatsoever. Nobody? Staff reports, Paul? Okay. Um. Doug?
That will be uh.
Hey. Uh, Rich? That thing, Dave?
Uh, yeah, the uh plow truck that we had, an incident was damaged in that uh storm we had on the twenty-seventh. Went back to the factory and it's being uh returned to us this Wednesday repaired, so that's good news, that's coming then. And also too, the other plow truck that we ordered for next year came in early and that's being delivered this Wednesday as well. So I I just want to say thank you to our peers at the Town of Tonawanda, they let us borrow a plow truck in the meantime. So it wasn't your imagination seeing a yellow plow out there on the towns, but that's what towns do and we have a little bit of problems, so. I know that was a tough storm and there was a lot of chatter about it, but uh, you know, we we got our equipment back and uh, I hope.
That's a quick repair. I didn't think it'd be that.
Well, the uh, the bodywork will go on in the spring. Okay, so this will be just the mechanical, the mechanical got fixed and the uh, the plow uh equipment that was uh. Damaged, so.
She good shape for the snow.
Should be good.
Yeah.
Alright, I didn't miss anybody, did I? Uh, motion to approve the abstract?
So moved.
Motion by Joe.
I'll second.
Second by Chuck. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Joe.
I'll second.
Second by Chuck. Any discussion?
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You don't torture me.
Thank you for coming tonight, everyone.
Hey Doug?